The March 25th order first is pledge of allegiance, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. We just have one addition that I know of is under consent agenda, item H, approved resolution granting the application of Stillwater Area High School Theater Parent Association to conduct a one-day raffle at Stillwater Area High School on April 19th, 2025. Are there any other changes?
I'll move the agenda.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is council staff reports. First of all, I'd like to thank so many people who stepped up and helped out when I was out sick, had surgery. And amazing how many people watched our council meetings when Councilmember Doherty took over. Where was I and why wasn't I here at the meeting? Because 25 years, I have not missed a meeting. So, thank you for all the good wishes and comments. And obviously, I'm back and rare to go again. So, thank you. And then as far as meetings, thank you to Councilmember Liljegren for taking on testifying at the Capitol for me, and also going to the fire advisory committee meetings, and Councilmember Doherty for stepping up. And our city staff was just fantastic through the whole thing. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And then for the next couple of weeks, I do have to coast a little bit. Yeah. So, I do have a bunch of meetings that I'm probably going to show up at anyway. Thursday is our Energy Transition Advisory Committee, Commission meeting, and we will be meeting here at our city hall, 9:30 in the morning. And this is the quarterly meeting where we kind of travel around the state, and it's all power plant cities, and all the commissioners from like Commerce, Public Utilities Commission, et cetera, just to get the updates on where we're at on closing power plants and energy renewables. Other than that, Councilmember Doherty?
The Parks Commission, Park and Trails Commission meeting this month was canceled, so that's all I had to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
The WMO meeting was also canceled for this month, so I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Liljegren?
Excuse me. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the 13th, and that item that was discussed is under new business aid tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember?
I attended the CVB meeting, and that's about all I have.
Thank you. Can you explain what the CVB is? Because we get so used to acronyms, and people ask you, what is a CVB?
Convention Visitor Bureau. And at the next meeting, Kelly, the president is going to be here to give a yearly presentation.
Thank you. Next is Administrator Rife.
Mayor, council, good evening. Speaking of the Fire Advisory Commission, I've been communicating with the Bayport City Administrator, so we're looking to set up the next fire advisory meeting here in April. So, imagine that Councilmember Liljegren and Mayor McCumber will get their invite here sometime shortly.
Okay, thank you. And then council chief, Chief Hanson.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a couple of quick things. We will have our outreach, the Stillwater Home Show this Saturday. We'll have a couple of officers out there meet and greet. And then we have, that's at the PAC Center. And then I checked with our Washington County Emergency Manager today. As suspected with our mild winter, we're really not in any concerns for flooding as of right now, which is good. And then same with spring, starting here, we'll have all four of our tornado sirens checked over here over the next couple of weeks is the plan to inspection. That's it.
Well, thank you. Assistant Administrator Pinsky?
Mayor and council, I have three things I'd like to report this evening. First, I'll start with our recycling award winner, Patrick Donahue at 14335, 55th Street North, was chosen as the most recent recycling award winner. He had his recycling out to the curb on pickup day, ready for collection. We appreciate his efforts. Second thing that I want to report is that we have a cleanup day coming up. That will be Saturday, May 17th. That's going to be from 8:00 a.m. until noon at the Anderson Corporation Southwest Parking Lot, enter off of Osgood Avenue. And we are accepting general household waste, large bulky items, furniture, yard waste, construction materials, not accepting electronics, appliances, hazardous waste, or mattresses. So, please come out and take advantage of that. There's no charge to come.
And I won't show up so that it's a nice day for you ladies, okay?
It'll be a beautiful day, whether you're there or not.
It always rains or snows when I come.
There is that. And then the third item is that party in the park this year is going to be Thursday, June 5th, 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., Breckie Park. And that's an opportunity for our residents to come out, meet our city council, our police department, our city staff, and city businesses. And it is free. We serve food, donuts, and beverages. And then some of our businesses will come out and be serving food and giving away free little trinkets as well and games. So, fun little event for our residents.
I have a question, maybe do or do not know the answer. Sometimes on our cleanup, spring cleanup day, the county has their hazardous cleanup at Lily Lake. Do you happen to know if that coincides?
Yes.
I'm looking for it because it was just, I just got an update earlier.
Oh, you did, okay.
Did you get it?
Yes, mayor and council, it is going to be that same day, Washington County Hazardous Waste Collection Site. That's going to be at the Lily Lake Arena Parking Lot off of Greeley Avenue. I don't know if, maybe Councilmember Runk finds it real quick, I don't know the hours. It might be the same hours as ours, but you can certainly call Washington County 651-430-6655, and they'll let you know the hours.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is visitor public comment section. This is the time for anyone who would like to address the council on anything. Please come forward. Okay. Then we'll move on to consent agenda, which is approved bills and investments, check 725-73 to 71612 for a total of $318,783.83. Approved city council minutes from May 11th, 2025. Approved replacement of Breckie Park hockey boards. Authorized the 2025 street sweeping contract with St. Cory Sweeping. Authorized purchase of lawnmower from Century Power. Approved replacement of city hall parking lot light heads. Authorized 2025 street chip seal maintenance contracts with Allied Blacktop and Farner. And approved resolution granting the application of Stillwater Area High School Theater Parent Association to conduct a one-day raffle at Stillwater Area High School on April 19th, 2025.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Rock, second by Councilmember Doherty. Jacob?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes.
Mayor, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Jenny, I got a different date.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yes. I got, I just got this. It says hazardous waste collection, Stillwater Collection Day for hazardous materials and electronics. It's a public event from Washington County. It is scheduled for Saturday, May 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lily Lake Ice Arena.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You know, if you've got the newsletter going on, maybe add that little blip in there too.
I certainly would.
Because I know you're putting the cleanup day in there.
Great information. Yes, yes.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business, which is Oak Park Heights, Oak Park Heights, Stagecoach Trail condo building, conditional use permit for parking at 5845 Stagecoach Trail North. Scott?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. CJ Rodenzo of JACC Capital Holdings has made this request for just a conditional use permit this time. It'll allow for additional parking from what is required by ordinance. The building has not changed in terms of its overall number of units. It'd be six units and a three-story condominium building, 5845 Stagecoach Trail North. As you remember, in October of last year, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use classification to residential business transitional and conditional use permits for building height, parking, and density bonus were applied for. At your December 10th meeting, you denied the requests, the conditional use permit requests, but approved the comprehensive plan amendment. And that subsequently was submitted to the Met Council and also approved. At this point, CJ has redesigned the building to comply with the building height, the density, and any design guidelines review for the project. The CUP is still required in that they want to go from six spaces to 13 spaces. It's interesting how we address that with, if you go under the required number of parking units, CUP, if you go over, you also require a CUP. Again, we, for multifamily, only require one parking space per unit. The plans include 13 spaces, one of which is disability accessible. Actually, the APK could come in tomorrow with a building permit request with six parking spaces and, you know, based upon building code. If everything is approved, he could build that project exactly the way he has proposed. Is again, just the parking that requires additional spaces. Planning Commission had recommended denial of this at their March 13th meeting on a 3-2 vote. They felt that the impact to the neighborhood has been an issue with this project. I have provided a resolution of approval and a resolution of denial for your consideration. The denial would need some additional findings of fact in this particular case, and that would be based on what the council discussion would be on that. So, with that, there is a list of conditions in the resolution of approval. Also, we've received a couple of pieces of correspondence. We have from Stephen Paulson and his wife Brenda, and Julia Nottingham has also submitted comments, and those should be on your desk this evening. Mr. Kramer is here from the Planning Commission, and CJ is here also, the APK.
We also got an additional one from Lisa Thietz, too.
Oh, yes, Ms. Owen, yes.
And I've talked to several of my neighbors over the last few days. I do have a couple of questions about the, first of all, for anybody that's been watching this, there's been the issue because previously was a location where A1 maintenance had been, and there were a lot of problems at the time with their commercial vehicles parking on the city streets around there. So, trying to avoid that for future. Obviously, this isn't a commercial property. This is going to be more residential, but regardless, people have parties, you know, you could have more parking on those streets. The couple of questions I have are, kind of relate to number five with the parking. I mean, I look at parking internally as probably safer than probably to park on Stagecoach, which when the county redid that, they didn't restripe it to accommodate parking out there, regardless whether it says no parking or not. People could park, you know, county could come out tomorrow and put a sign and say, "Don't park," which could cause a future problem. Then people are parking on those side streets. So, almost what I'd like to put in here at some point, is it something in the future, we see that there's a problem, we have correspondence with the county as far as how to park out there? And likewise, a speed study of some sort, because there is none right now, and that speed limit has been raised. That curb cut, now previously, the county, when they redid Stagecoach, would not allow any future curb cuts. The fact that that curb cut is there, is existing, it's grandfathered, it can happen. But there is no answer if that needs to be shut off at an alternate curb cut were to be somewhere. I want something there for future, if this turns out to be a problem. Does that raise a minimum of that? And likewise, when it comes to number six, with the lighting fixtures, is because of the shoreline setback ordinance with Wild and Scenic River. Right now, as I look at the lumens, they're within rights, but as we know, the shoreline gets to be a touchy issue that if there is a problem in the future, they have to go to a different kind of lighting fixture that it could be required in here. Anybody have comments on that?
I think those sound like good conditions.
Okay.
I also was looking at kind of adjusting the conditions as well. I mean, the purposes of us adjusting the parking, well, there's multiple purposes, but one of them was for looking at preserving nature and wildlife. And I know a lot of residents were commenting about.
The turkeys in my yard?
The turkeys.
They could go away.
The view and that people will have these views into their house. And so, in some ways, I would like to adjust requirement number two to, like, to the extent the city arborist seems reasonable, encourage tree cover on the front to address that resident concern to extent possible.
I agree with that, but also make sure that there isn't a blind, you know, they're watching the blinds for people pulling in and out, that we don't have somebody rolling out into Stagecoach unintentionally.
Yeah, but I think that meets the goal of the policy and should help alleviate some resident concerns.
So, encourage more landscape coverage.
Yeah. Councilmember Johnson, just so we understand, you're saying at the front of the building, encourage more landscaping at the front of the building?
More tree cover ideally.
More tree at the front.
Tree, shrub.
Yeah, the goal that a lot of residents.
Line that glass. There's a lot of glass on that side.
A lot of residents had concerns that those windows were looking at their house. And so, to the extent we can encourage tree cover in that area to be a natural buffer, it probably would be a better view for the people in the condos as well as, to the extent we can as a city, address the residents' concerns.
Sure. Mike, did you have some? You look like you already say something.
I've got a question, but it's for Scott. I'm looking at the property. The property north of that is.
Owned by Mendat.
No, there is one piece of property.
Oh, okay. I see what you're talking about.
Owned by a gentleman from Mankato.
Right.
And is that classified as residential? Different zoning?
No, that's still industrial, because the industrial zone surrounds that property. Double check that.
I was on the county map site, and they identified it as a residential class.
I think at our next meeting, if that is zoned industrial, we should maybe consider like looking at that, because I don't think that in industrial, you should be compatible with this neighborhood here.
Oh, no. My correction, it's open space conservation.
Oh, good. Perfect.
I was thinking it's industrial, but it's open space.
Okay, that's fine then. And the one to the north of that then is Mendat's.
Yep.
And the north of that is.
That one piece, I don't even know if it's buildable. I just happened to, was looking up something, and I thought, who owns that piece of property? And it came up that it was privately owned. And so, I'm like, okay, that could be a possibility at some point in the future, that someone else will be coming in.
So, if there's any development on that property, if it's even possible, it would have to go through a rezoning. This is a single-family house. You could put a single-family house there. If it met the other criteria.
Okay, any other questions on the requirements? And just so everybody knows, this can happen anyway. Okay, this is just asking for a conditional use permit to add additional parking spaces at that spot, to add six additional. You can say that's too many, but if the six, I mean, I'm only going to speak for myself. I look at six parking spaces internal to the property, they're not parking on the streets. They're staying internal. Whether they use them or not, who knows?
Madam mayor?
Yes.
May I have a clarification on number five? Now, again, you haven't voted on it, but you're talking about, you mentioned correspondence with county related to the curb cut, or am I mixing up?
Parking on Stagecoach was one of, okay, lost my page now.
Parking on Stagecoach.
If there was ever issues with.
Future issues, okay, because it's striped basically for a bicycle lane right now. But it doesn't say no parking for vehicles.
No signage on that at all.
There's no signage out there?
There's no signage.
So, you have the issue of somebody has a graduation party, and they've got cars that are parking on Stagecoach. I'm just using that hypothetical. And you've got somebody who's riding a bike that then is pushing out. That we have that future discussion that if it seems to be a conflict, either the county restripes it for parking, or we have a conversation.
Okay.
And we know how those go.
I'm wondering if that makes sense as a separate resolution for us to set a check-in point in like a year after the development opens?
We could do that.
Would that make more sense, Scott?
We could.
At a 5A, 5B?
You could do a 10, for instance, that says, you know, I've seen this in other conditional use permits, that the city council could come back within one year and review the conditional use permit.
Or even put it annually, annually, because maybe something doesn't happen the first year, and something happens the second year. We're going to have all that development that's going to be going on with the new Anderson Elementary down farther, and that housing development that's going to be going in by Barker's Alps. So, traffic could potentially pick up, which means more volume, people who don't like to obey speed limits. I mean, granted, right now, Stagecoach, considering what it once was, the traffic has dropped tremendously, but that's today. You know, when some of these houses were built in the 1800s, they were worried about where their horses were going to go, not where the vehicles were going to go. So, that's what I'm saying, going into the future, who knows what modes of transportation there will be 100 years from now? But if we put in there check-in annually, is this still working? Is it not?
I'm nervous we can do it annually.
Yeah, that's would be my question. Can we do it annually?
I assume we could do one year.
We've done it before on some things.
Sure. I think you can have a condition of annual review of the parking and traffic considerations for the development.
That way, we can react to the county, because it is a county road. Doesn't necessarily, you know, go on the developer's side.
Would you, oh, I'm sorry.
They cooperate with everybody.
Would you like that as an annual review by staff? And if there's.
Yes, yeah.
Conditions noted, then we send it to the city council.
And likewise, wrap that speed study in there at the same time.
Okay.
You know, if we find that all of a sudden, I just have this gut feeling that once the Anderson Elementary goes in and that housing development, the speed's going to go up. I mean, whether it's posted at 30, it's going to go up.
Mayor, council, may I suggest, if we want to get into the speed study, could we have maybe a separate discussion at the work session about?
We could do that on the 8th, and then just send a general letter to the county if wanted.
What the parameters?
Is anybody amenable to that?
If you're interested in that, just so we have some more direction on the parameters.
Sure.
Thank you.
They're not going to do it, but we can always ask.
I'd like to remind you that in the county's comprehensive plan, they intend to give that to us.
Yeah, sometimes be careful what you ask for, otherwise.
Whether we would accept it is a very different question.
Bike trail is supposedly going to go in somehow or other, you know, from the third end of the county to the south of that.
Exactly.
They've got all kinds of ideas.
Okay, is that enough direction on Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Jacob, anybody? Is there a motion? Or is the APK have anything that you'd like to say, or anybody from the audience have, Mr. Kramer?
I'm Jim Kramer. I'm on the Planning Commission. And one of the things I think that's often overlooked is that we keep saying that this really is conditional use permit. All we're doing is we're talking about parking spaces. But if you look at the requirements of a conditional use permit, if, and one of the reasons for not granting it is that if granting it has a negative impact on the surrounding area, and that's what's happening, this, this is not just an approval of six parking spots in a vacuum. It's the approval of six parking spots which will allow this building to be built, which will in turn reduce the value of the neighborhood or of the surrounding area. And I think that needs to at least be discussed. That was, it's, up until now, it's kind of pushed to the side, that, well, that really is not important kind of thing. And that all this is, is a parking issue. And that's not the case. The conditional use permit should not be granted if granting it reduces the value of neighboring property. And I'm somebody, just as an aside, I'm somebody who believes that you should be able to use your property for what you want to use it. However, it's kind of mindful of, you can swing your fist wherever you want, as long as my nose isn't in the way. And that's the same thing here. You can build what you want on your property, but you cannot or should not be allowed to destroy the value of your neighbor's property.
Just jumping off that just a little bit, too, as I did sign on with the rest of the mayors, a lot of the mayors, anyway, opposing the legislation that's at the Capitol right now for infill of housing. If the legislature decides, this is all off the table. They decide what gets built in our cities, not us. What zoning happens, there'll be no more design guidelines. We still have control right now until the legislature decides what they're going to do, but.
Well, I guess I'll.
Go ahead, please.
All respectfully disagree with Mr. Kramer to some degree. The conditional use permit that is at issue here is not for the overall development or the particular use that's being requested. The use of a multifamily residential development is an allowed use. The conditional use permit aspect of this is in fact for parking, and requesting more parking than what is required under our zoning regulations. And the irony here is, all the neighborhood opposition is saying, we want more onsite parking for this development to avoid street parking. And so, it's, the requested conditional use is remedying some of the exact concerns that the neighbors are raising here. And I also disagree to some extent that there's this kind of broad-brush statement that a residential development that's otherwise allowed by your zoning regulations is somehow going to devalue all of the neighboring properties. I mean, it's an allowable use. And so, why is that allowable use going to devalue neighboring properties? Because that should be an expected use that those neighbors should expect could occur on that property under your zoning rules.
Or it could be subjective. Well, I don't like your greenhouse, and it's depreciating my value. That's kind of a biased statement, you know. Somebody has said, you know, people have said, well, I don't like the design of the building. Well, the design is the design, you know. Some people may like it, some people may hate it. It's subjective.
Well, and I would agree that, I would think. Well, and I would agree that, I would think that having a bunch of cars parked on the street in front of houses, you could argue that that would devalue your properties.
Sure.
You know, so.
And there are some.
To me, I look at this as you're adding, they're adding parking to a building that's going to be built. And I think that's a positive overall.
To the extent the council suggested some changes to the conditions, I would recommend that we actually specify exactly what those condition statements are going to be in the resolution, so that staff isn't just kind of ad-libbing on what the council's discussed in concept here, and so that we have some pretty specific direction on the language. And so my understanding is one of the additional conditions is city staff shall be permitted to review, and this is something that I've just kind of tried to come up with on the fly here, on the commentary, city staff shall be permitted to review the parking and traffic safety of the development on an annual basis. And the other condition, I believe, was more of an addition to the arborist review provision, indicating that city arborist review shall include concepts of additional landscaping on the front side of the building.
Particularly trees, as many trees as possible to the arborist's judgment.
And just to further clarify, Mayor and Councilmember Johnson, are you talking like overstory trees, so like taller, when you say trees?
I defer to the arborist's judgment on that, because I do know, especially with the setback, she'll have some strong ideas, and I don't want to supersede her judgment when I'm not an expert.
Do we have room to put city trees in right away?
That'd be the question, which is why I think we need to defer to Lisa.
I'm trying to figure out how they could put in more trees, and I think you're almost empty. These are our property.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, that's what we'll confer with the arborist on that.
Let's put in there per the arborist recommendations. Do that. Kevin, that sounds fine. Is everybody okay with that language? And if so, we could approve the resolution or deny the resolution, depending on your choice. Rather than bring it back, I think, okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution with the changes laid out by the city attorney.
I second that.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. Jacob?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Littlejergren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes, so long as it keeps coming back and we keep reviewing it, I think we're, it's not my first choice, but it's better than what it started with. Okay, so we'll move on then to approve the purchase of the 2025 Ford Interceptor Explorer police vehicle along with the uplifting equipment, and authorize the sale of the 2022 salvaged Ford Interceptor Explorer police vehicle. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you know, one of our squad cars was heavily damaged in an accident earlier this month. The league did confirm that as a complete total loss, so we are trying to move forward as far as replacing that vehicle. It would have been replaced next year, so it's a little earlier than planned on it. But as you see in that memo I submitted, there is some cost here, obviously, that will be needing to take up on to get this outfitted and completed. We do expect sell us at auction and get some of that money recouped back along with our insurance payment on it. But thankfully, Ford was able to secure us a vehicle if approved tonight, and we can get that replaced pretty quick, probably one of the quickest turnarounds that I've ever seen, so.
I have a question. When I watched the actual accident as it happened, it looked like the engine started on fire, did it?
It did not.
Okay, I just saw, it looked like flames, and I was just hoping it didn't. Okay, go ahead.
Yep, no, no engine fire. So looking at purchasing the 2025 Ford Interceptor, and then also your permission to sell that at auction as well tonight. Any other?
So is there a motion to get us a new squad?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Littlejergren?
That also includes selling, maybe one to separate.
You want it both?
Altogether, yeah.
Altogether, fine, okay.
Both. Your action item includes both, and I find that both combined together.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Littlejergren, second by Councilmember Doherty. How long is this one going to take to get here?
It should be, we're hoping by the end of April.
Oh, that's pretty quick.
Right, that's one of the quickest turnarounds, and they were able to.
Seems like it was about a year waiting for these other ones.
What are the graphics going to be?
The graphics?
Yeah.
So there will be, just like you see right now, our full graphics.
I mean, because this was the darker car, right?
So that is a separate one. This is, this is a full white car with the, your new graphics, and that will be the same. And then the, I think you're referring to the black squad car with the stealth graphics, the ghost graphics. That's also being replaced as scheduled this year. So both of those cars will be coming in at the end of April. So we'll have both. And then it'll have the same graphics as you see right now on that black car.
And we're getting the truck.
Truck is here. We'll pick it up maybe tomorrow or Thursday. We stopped down and took a look at it for some final stuff, so, yeah, we're hoping to get that.
That'll be great to have everybody back on the road again.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have to vote yet?
Yes, we do. So we have a motion by Councilmember Littlejergren, second by Councilmember Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody's opposed, so we'll move on to cleanup at Culver Park Hill along Power Avenue North. Andy?
Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if you folks know this, I think you do, but for many, many, many years, our resident Pam Patrick took after the garden at Culver Park, but she can't do it anymore. And so that hill needs to be cleaned up. And so that's what we're proposing to do tonight, is simply to clean up the hill. We did seek some quotes. We got some pretty good numbers from Valdez, our current lawn care contractor, just over $6,500 to do all the landscaping work at the park. And then our public works staff would rebuild a six-foot-tall black chain link fence in place of the damaged fence that's currently there.
Okay.
And so we're just, we're seeking the funding for that $6,500 and using our budgeted projects to do so.
And it is budgeted projects it's coming from?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions on the work?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Runk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I need some more weather.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council items or announcements? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, that was you, Mike, Littlejergren?
Yep.
Motion by Councilmember Littlejergren, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.